We'll call a meeting to order. Christina, you have the next role.
Yes.
I will dispense with the pledge unless there is an objection and then definitely recite it. Approval of tonight's agenda, please.
All approved, tonight's agenda.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, and no motion carries. Right on to number three. Josh.
We're still forward.
Yeah, she said she'd be here, I haven't heard otherwise.
We're waiting for someone.
That would be good though. Good.
Fashionably late. That's okay, Rachel would love to go home too.
Then we'll move on to our whole business and let your territory get on here, please.
Yeah, so you've, you have the, the information. And I'm trying to wrap up the financial portion of our construction that's been going on. It was noticed that we did not have the resolution in place, even though it was all acknowledged.
Sure.
You know, but we just don't have the formal resolution which is needed to recognize Cedar Avenue. So then our financing can, can finish up their title work portion.
So basically what Rachel was, is discussing is that shaded area on map that came about when Josh Dickerson surveyed the area for the property for the co-op's expansion. That's a proposed extension of Cedar Avenue. Cedar right now basically stops right at the co-op property and this extends the, the street right up to the rail bank. So what the city has to do is recognize that as an extension of Cedar in order for the state and the co-op's project to continue. It is a recognition of the the city right away and that's it. There will be a maintenance agreement to follow between the city and the co-op. For Cedar, I mean, right now it's kind of a, we help you, you help us kind of a thing on Cedar as it is. And Mike's been involved in that conversation as well. He's running late, but he knows that we're all gonna help each other on that, but it has to be formally recognized that with a session in order for them to continue on their project.
Yeah, it, it kind of all came to us Christian Hall because we were just missing that, that portion, so Christina has, you know, got us on the work session and I guess my question is if, if you are to approve it, do we have to wait for the August fourth meeting?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, and that's doable on our end, but I just saw a different.
It doesn't speed us up.
Understood.
I guess at this point, I would ask if, you know, the board has any questions or concerns at this point, but I feel as though it's just a real simple approval at the August fourth meeting, but I think it would ease your guys' mind if you knew there was no hangups and it's just gonna go like brutal.
No, I have no problem with it, it's just a tea that isn't gross.
Cause that being said, I can note that into its work session meeting minutes as well, which I think would help you guys immensely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it really hasn't been formally discussed at the board level.
We did the conveyance and did the transfer of the property and between the city and the co-op, we recognized it, but it was not formal. And so that part was caught by our, our finance.
You guys have any questions?
The road's pretty much there.
Well, and that's the other thing, it is there, it is there.
It's there.
It's definitely there now.
We're just gonna call it a road now.
Yeah. In most cases, you know, when you assume possession of a road, it's because there's been some maintenance to it, but that section hadn't been, been developed yet because it hadn't started. So that's the fight is how do you recognize possession of something when it isn't there yet? It is there now and will be forever, so that's kind of, um, that was our attorney's little hangup is like, how would it be different if we were already working on it? And I'm like, but we have to bank it first before we can work on it. So, um, yeah. No questions, you guys? Well, that seemed easy.
Pretty, uh, pretty straightforward.
Straightforward. Thank you guys, yeah. Perfect.
Have a good evening.
You guys have a good night.
Wow, item B? Since Jim decides he needs time off?
Yeah, Tim is on PPO this week, so he asked me to stand in for him on Benji Austin's office. He wanted me to give a quick update on the P E R and the E R. Both of those are in draft form right now. And he said he should be able to get those completed sometime in August and submitted, so. And then the facility plan is something else that, uh, that'll come following those two reports.
So I met with Tony Gustafson today. And we walked in through the library, um, he is working on gonna be scheduling some demo this coming, starting this Thursday. I've been in contact with Kelly. And I'll have to follow up with her again tomorrow. Once she gets back, there's gonna be some, uh, the walls of the existing office are gonna get ripped down. So there's gonna be some relocation of some books, the food shelf items and a few other things inside that office. Will probably need some manpower, either volunteers and or staff in order to assist, some stuff will get saved and some stuff will not, um, so I'm gonna try to discuss with Kelly if she can get some more of those rolling book shelves that are on the wheels that she has in there, so it isn't too cumbersome for her. But, um, yeah, Tony's, Tony's ready to go, he's got his subs started. Once he gets the drywall removed off that office, then he can start running wires where they need to be, so we are getting running on that. I attended the county commissioners' work session on Tuesday afternoon last week. Commissioner Gould wanted an update from the city as to where that project was and how it came to where it is now. And provided them a quick summary from the year we found out we had the capital improvement project funds to through the award of the Board of Education money. And they had some questions regarding if Kitchy was, you know, helping fund anything more than what we have been awarded from the grant and the local option sales tax as well. But it went well, they just wanted to know where we were going, if they knew, if we had an idea of when construction would start, what was gonna get changed, and where budget was. That went over really well, they were really happy to have, um, some communication at that point. They want to hear that the library's gonna get some renovations, so. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Oh, what does he find to get going?
Me too, and me too, and Tony apologizes, um, for not having everything going, but he had a lot of people that he was helping after the July four storm. And some people that he's done in the past, so they called him right away and of course you can say no.
No, not at that.
Well, he's pretty civic minded too, so.
Not that drunk shirt.
Exactly.
Did he give us any idea of the length of the project?
Nope. You know, with those types of renovations and the need to be able to relocate a bunch of items, it's going to take some time. We're not going to be able to strip the library completely clean, the subs are gonna work around the library's operations, so it's not going to be like, when I, when we did city hall, we pulled everything out. We stuck it all in the back room and we did everything we could to still operate with one computer and one small little desk hooked up to a printer. But we did shut down a couple of days in order to do this, so there might be some time. The good thing is, is that the library's not open on Mondays. Which gives him full reign to be in there. And there's extra hours the library isn't open. Will also get on time to work in there as well.
Uh, did you make that meeting?
On Thursday, yeah, I was on, I, I yeah, I did everything, but we had no audio back and forth, she was trying to fix it and it just didn't work. I mean, all the rest of it.
I was just wondering how they were, if they were if they know how far along we've come or.
Well. Kelly's been talking to her boss and everything. There, uh, there's a special meeting on Thursday that they want everybody down there for. Something came up.
Well, I guess we'll find out later, I guess.
I should go, probably go down there anyway.
But at this time, do we want to, if this, if this is the person we were waiting for?
We've been waiting for this person for a long.
I texted, I just got in town from work.
Anyway, I'll turn it over to Josh then.
So Officer Amson and I just wanted to recognize Mary for actions that she took to assist Officer Amson on July fifth, um, out at the trailer court during the evening. We've felt it necessary and appropriate that, that Mary be recognized for her actions and the assistance that she gave and, um, the appreciation that we have as local law enforcement and you know, guys that are up here working by ourselves a lot of the time, uh, so.
Absolutely, Travis has got, uh, a little letter here.
Um, and just for a little context, um, there's an accident there in the trailer park, the driver was arrested for DUI. I ended up fighting with both her and her husband, they've both been charged with obstructing legal process and assault amongst other things, so that's kind of the background to what I'm about to read now, so. Uh, on behalf of the Black Duck Police Department, we extend our deepest appreciation and formal commendation for your courageous and selfless actions on July fifth, twenty twenty five during an incident involving an impaired driver and subsequent assault within the city of Black Duck. Your willingness to physically intervene in a volatile situation without regard for your own safety, directly assisted law enforcement and safely bringing a violent suspect into custody. Your presence and decisive action not only supported me in effecting the arrest. Is I motion like if I don't?
Yeah.
So am I, so.
Can you finish reading this? Right there. But also.
Uh, your presence and decisive action not only supported Officer Travis Amson in effecting the arrest, but also played a pivotal role in preventing what have, could have, what could have been a prolonged altercation or further injuries to any individuals involved. Such bravery is rare and your conduct exemplifies the highest ideals of public service and community partnership. And placing yourself at risk to also, to assist a law enforcement officer in need. You demonstrated a level of courage that deserves both recognition and gratitude. Please accept this letter along with the accompanying certificate of commendation as a sincere expression of, of our department's gratitude and respect. Your actions will not be forgotten and they stand as a powerful example of community integrity and civic responsibility.
I tried to get out of this.
Was that certificate of meritorious citizenship who married?
Did Josh go in the middle of us? Tall, short.
We should, we should look at it around.
Travis, you told me there was no pictures.
Thank you, dear.
You're welcome. And I actually did not, I said it wasn't a big deal, me, it was just something that any normal person would do. But when he was threatened and was, while they were trying to hit him, all I could see was husband and wife drunk against law enforcement and him getting hurt, so, oh my God, so it just I didn't have any thoughts except for, and I told him, was that he needed to be protected. And there was another gentleman there, a relative who had no concern for him.
No.
And I, it's just something that someone should do, that there's no second thought.
You would think so, but not a lot of people do.
Most people wouldn't do that, so.
There's a lot of folks out there that would have just pulled out their cell phones and recorded.
And it, it's a tough, it's a tough spot, you know, I'm down in Turtle River at the time, doing a field sobriety on an individual down there. We had another serious assault call going on down in the Turtle River area at the time as well. And then we had two deputies that were up further north of town that were coming, but it was gonna take them a little bit. Um, and you saw how long it took for the first deputy to get there, um, you know, so that would have been, had you not stepped in, who knows what could have happened, you know, um, as far as Travis having to use further use of force and that kind of stuff and, you know, your actions helped prevent that type of thing and calm the situation down, to get it under control, so.
And the lady did approach me after she was out of jail, crying and regretted. I said, oh, are you coming to find me now? I said, cause you threatened to, you were gonna do stuff to me, and she's like, I'm so sorry, I don't, I don't remember any of that and but anyway, I, I tried to get out of this because I'm just not this type. I didn't want pictures, but only because he wanted me here to give that thanks coming from him, did I say I would come.
And we did it.
Thanks, Mary.
Also be thanks to the community.
Well, it was a bad situation.
Well, I've been working here for eighteen years in this town and you've never helped me like that, so.
Just come with backup.
For those of you on the board that don't know, Mary was on the city council when I first started. She's a very involved, dedicated citizen and always has been, looking out for the good that needs to continue happening in this town.
And it needs to be recognized, it's appropriate that it's recognized and.
I just wanna break down crying. You won't.
Me either.
I, I knew, only when you leave. I'm okay now.
Well, go home and cry, you got dressed there.
Uh, I think that's about it from us, we do, we did have, um, Officer A.J. Richards started today part-time, um, he was around this morning, interviewed his son. He's a deputy, he's been working for the sheriff's office for, on the road for year and a half years, he was in the jail for eight to ten years. He was a solid individual and, uh, he'll be working some of the days that Travis is off, typically Monday, Tuesdays.
Travis gets those on.
It just reiterates the reason why we need a police department, so not only that, but we need to continue hammering through and trying to find more full-time officers. Most people don't see or hear anything until it's either really bad or becomes really good.
Well, this is just a little there, another nightly thing that comes up on a shift that, you know, Travis or anyone else up the deal with around town and, you know, it's not all over the news, it's not anywhere. Nor do we need it to be or want it to be, but it's, it's here, all the things are here all around town. So, you know, I thank Travis and the work that he's done and the year after he's been here, he's been solid, he's been great. We have a couple of these part-time guys that are solid deputies that are willing to take on a few hours here and there. Help keep town safe and keep it rolling, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You guys will be around for the wood curbers on Saturday or?
That's your weekend.
We are off this weekend. I talked to the northern deputy though, so he's aware and will hopefully be around to help.
Yeah, cause that's a really a crowd that's preparation parking, so for, you know, for their business.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so. Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Well, that brings us back to the duck and its restoration.
I don't have any updates for this at this point because we last discussed that we were going to handle this in person. Hasn't been in my in my lane at this point.
I went down to look at it really close there today.
Since our last meeting?
Yes. And, uh, I'll probably have to get down with Mike together. Yeah, like I said, all the whole. Yeah, yeah, so. It's more involved than I think it, than we realized it's a phase, so.
Well.
Nothing's inflexible with this.
Any thoughts, Mike? Just haven't had time yet.
Like a tape?
Got all kinds of stuff going on, that's not one of my main priorities. It'll get done. Okay? Let me see something here on our city hall repairs.
Yeah, I'm happy to report that USDA, um, has awarded Bell Trammy Electric their revolving loan, uh, fund. Which means subsequently the city's going to receive their funds, um, to work at city hall. So, uh, the documents I gave for you guys to look at, um, is the grant letter of conditions from USDA to Bell Trammy Electric. Um, there will be, um, some supporting, uh, documents I'll have in the council packet. Supplemental financing, sign off that the city is, uh, you know, gonna provide X amount, I think it was just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to the project in one document and the, uh, management representation letter. Because we'll be the ultimate loan recipient for the council to approve on the August fourth meeting. Once those documents are signed off by both, um, this board and Bell Trammy Electric's board. They have like a hundred and twenty days to close on their money from USDA. And then subsequently we can start working on, uh, providing a finance package of what we need to have done. I'll probably kick back through to with Seth and, um, my initial thoughts are, you know, we'll put what we need to have repaired to the building, the parapet, the roof, the water intrusion, those types of, those are those big things that we wanted to do together and hopefully receive maybe bids for it and get it within our budget, so, um, we can hopefully work towards twenty-six as our as our opportunity to do these repairs. Which was what I was hoping for originally, but I wasn't counting.
No, it seemed like it was going to be a longer process then.
Well, like, yeah, I was very surprised, I got word from Bob Gregg from Bell Trammy Electric on Tuesday morning about this, so it was really good, good news.
So this letter came from the, our rural economic development people?
From USDA.
Is the references there revolving loan fund plan, I guess the grantee would be Bell Trammy Electric.
The grantee is Bell Trammy Electric, the ultimate recipient is City of Black Duck.
I was just wondering, I'm, I'm a type of, typographical there, I was wondering if that was a typo, because they said their revolving fund plan was stated December sixth, twenty twenty-five. Like five months in the future is.
Well, like I said, they have a hundred and twenty days to complete all their letter of conditions, so they probably pushed it out there based upon timing in order to get boards to move on, their final paperwork together.
Bell Trammy Electric's board has to sign off.
Correct. But I, I requested this so that I could give you guys, you know, the true, yes, this is, this has been approved, so.
And the right away request of Virgin Beyond.
So what I need for you, the board tonight is to review, is to have reviewed the purchase agreement draft. I am drafting a resolution that will have to go with the purchase agreement. Um, what needs to be decided so that it can get approved on August fourth is the price of the piece of property to go to Virgin Beyond. If you read all the language in there, I communicated to our attorney that, you know, closing costs and all that filing would be on the buyer's responsibilities, so the highlighted items are pretty much what we have to fill the blanks on in. But last we discussed this, there was no set decision as to what the piece of property would be offered for. Everyone at the table just said, well, we just wanted to pay for all the fees, well. Okay, that's fine, they still gotta put a dollar amount on the property. So I'm gonna ask for that tonight so that I can finalize the P A, so it can be approved on August fourth.
Any thoughts? Well, I'd wanna keep it thin just to recover our expenses, I mean, I'm assuming our attorney was involved in the prep of this document.
Yeah, yeah, I think I have about a hundred dollars worth of, um, attorney's fees in it so far.
I mean, I think we wanna stimulate business. We don't wanna dissuade them from purchasing.
I mean, we got it for a steal, so.
If you can build this business and contribute to the economy, you know, why this property helps them, let's, let's do it, but we should get something at least to cover your attorney's fees, you've spent a lot of time on it. I don't think it.
Well did you note that it did say that your buyer would be, uh, buyer has agreed to pay the seller's attorney's fees?
Oh.
It's in page two. It's all in there.
Okay, without the purchase price.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so I need, I need the purchase price bill then in order to complete the the document.
Two hundred bucks. Hundred bucks. Yeah, if he's paying, uh, we're gonna egg waste him, I should, for the attorney fees. Our attorneys are a hundred bucks, what, 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 what do you wanna do?
What would a piece of property like that be, around ten? Seventeen grand or something probably, realistically, a small one.
Uh, we sold this piece of property, which is flat and buildable for nineteen.
Hey, yeah, so I.
And one with a structure on for twenty-three, I think. So that piece of property is probably worth a lot less. I would not put a very high dollar amount on it.
Yeah, because it's not sellable to anybody else.
Correct.
Really buy the.
Yeah, no one's gonna, I mean, if you're just looking for an arbitrary number here now.
Say a few hundred dollars. Yeah, we don't have to, just, we don't want him to decide no when that, not build this business.
I mean, you don't want the one dollar and other good and valuable considerations line on there.
I put fifty or a hundred bucks on him.
Fifty bucks.
There you go, I like fifty.
Pizza parties.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just, and sure that he understands.
Where is he getting pizza?
He's gonna be invoiced for the additional charge.
This is correct, but I don't want to give this to Tyler until I have a dollar amount from you guys.
Yep, fifty bucks seems like the new.
And 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 all the lines saying that he's gonna pay the attorney's fees.
Correct.
So if I don't have that line, it's pretty hard for me to say arbitrarily, this is how much you're gonna owe the city for.
Yep.
Something that you've already started using regardless.
So let, let's just call it what it is, say, yeah, fifty dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Twenty-two cents.
And I wouldn't look forward with that. Oh, boy.
And the cemetery.
Revision number seventeen, I think, I have now. Put back in the general regulations.
Yes.
They are now in section twelve on page five of the ordinance, under monuments and markers, the general regulations are all back in there. And then the rest of the subdivisions are adjusted as needed. So that their numbers are correct, um. I just need to know if they're ready to move forward with public reading at this point. Obviously, for context, if the council is agreeable with the ru- with the amendments, I could get it into the Saturday paper already for the first and final reading to be on the fourth, and then we can move forward. Cause that's within my ten day timeframe.
I didn't see anything that was if I'm not looking for A's or B's or C's.
Guys are okay with going forward and done? Fabulous. Going to be a very busy August fourth meeting, I hope you guys are all the neat juities. There's a lot going on. As you see in letter H, that will be your two thousand twenty four financial audit presentations.
I love seven two.
Pardon?
We're gonna have that all wrapped up, but.
Yep, yep, they're almost done, I've got some stuff that they gave me while I was on um while I was off last week that I have to find out, finish up this week, but they'll have that done. And Troy and Chris will both be here in person on the fourth. So.
So do we wanna schedule the reading of the ordinance maybe at a different meeting?
We could do it ahead of time, we could just pre, I, I mean, if you wanna put it off, we can put it off until the work session in August, that's not, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm just thinking there's a lot going on, we're gonna be waiting to for a thing during that meeting.
I'm open to that.
I mean, we
You wanna wait till August? That's going to be.
Complaints from the cemetery, we reconsider, but I don't think.
Okay, that's gonna be on the eighteenth then.
Well.
Okay. So we'll do the first reading on the eighteenth, and then you'll approve it at the September meeting on September eighth. Okay.
Then people, they don't have to wait, like for us, but if we can space it out a little bit.
It's not, work sessions are more shorter anyways.
Okay.
It's not like this is a big audience thing where people are flocking in.
Sure.
It's true. Have other conversations.
Right.
And since we just did, anything else we need to know, Christina?
Uh, that's. Uh, no.
No.
No, nothing more than I've been notified at this point, except for all the work that they're giving me, so.
Still, so this is a yearly?
You know, by the time I'm done, I'll get started with this year, so.
Every year will be better.
I know, yeah, I'm hoping so, and I know they are too. We'll do some onsite, I think, next year, so it's not so hard.
Okay. You're our local option.
So this is the first monthly report that I received from Department of Revenue. I just wanted to bring this to your attention and explain a couple of things that I've been educated on. This is what the tax receipts um collected report will look like from uh D O R. Um, remember that this is May's receipts for April's sales and use, because it started April one.
Correct.
And they're always two months behind. Um, the gross revenue amount that was taken for a half percent sales tax was six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. If you factor that over, I kinda did a quick calculation, I think it was somewhere like somewhere around three hundred and forty thousand dollars in sales citywide that that would have come from for a half percent, I think that's what I remember.
Yeah, that's.
Calculating out. Um, just using like our own uh sales and use that's reported for like the golf course or the liquor store, it's just a sample. Um, the startup costs are a one-time only, I was aware but not aware of the large dollar amount, so I kinda questioned that, the agreement that we agreed to and signed was for D O R to collect and distribute the half percent. The startup costs are one-time, they included notifying the businesses by letter and email that the local sales tax is starting with the rate and the start date of the new local tax, registering the business in the area for the local new local tax and setting up the sales and use tax return with the new tax lines for businesses to report and remit to new local tax and getting their system set up was the largest cost of the setup fee, it is only a one-time fee, but um, as you can see with the miscellaneous deduction plus the fees, we don't have anything yet. So it'll take a couple of months before this starts accumulating, but this at least gives you some idea about um
Okay.
what we're gonna get every month.
Quick question then.
Yeah.
Do our startup costs count towards the amount that we receive, since it's a lift, since we have a cap?
It's being, no, well okay, I think I understand your question.
Oh, yeah.
Um we get a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
For the library. Will this come off of there? Yes, I think you're right.
Okay.
I didn't think that far forward until you said it. Quite possibly, because that's how we're paying them.
But I don't know if there was like a part in parentheses or italicized or.
Well, I had to ask, I mean, I knew I read the agreement, but there was really no.
That says administrative costs.
It doesn't say how much everything is, and I would have, that would have sparked in my brain when I knew it was gonna be fifteen grand.
Good.
Because the sad thing is, is um we, as a city, also notified all our businesses individually, and so did so did the state.
Yeah, no, I received one.
Yeah, so there you go.
Okay. Good enough?
The other thing to keep in mind is that this was April's receipts.
Yes.
It's not a very busy month, so that number will fluctuate depending upon traffic and sales throughout the city.
Correct. All right, any questions on that?
Going forward, when I get this monthly, I'll try to put it in the consent agenda.
That'd be great.
Okay. That's, that's my plan. Um, additionally, there was, I discussed this with our auditors and you will see on the end of month report, there is another separate fund that um for the library project, that this money will get revenue into, instead of going into the general fund or into four oh one, that they advised based upon the potential of this being um bonded um to collectively put all the money into one specific fund for this project instead of um four oh one or one oh one. So in last month's uh, at the July meeting, at the end of month, you would have seen a correction on the um K R L S money that came in. It came out of the four oh one fund and went into this new fund I'm speaking of. What number I gave it off the top of my head. So look for that again on August fourth.
For on to mid dot.
All right.
Even, you're a patient. Patient man.
Yeah.
He's stuck. Know to come later.
Well, I, I think the last time I visited with you guys, it's been twelve, twelve months, maybe fourteen months ago, it's been quite a while. Uh, when I was here last, this was the picture that I brought with. Not super helpful, but just are basically a red line on a piece of paper saying, hey, we're gonna work in this area, I'm here to hear. Uh, we talked about lighting, and then there was actually an agreement on uh, the fifty fifty cost split for the lighting on Summit Avenue. So maybe what's happened in the last, you know, twelve months or so is uh, we've worked with our uh, pre-design staff and ADA folks down in central office and uh we came up with this depiction here of Summit Avenue and the crossing, and this is, this is what we're gonna go with in the design. So you can see on the picture here, there's quite a few things that are labeled, uh, we got two pipe removals there of the the county road, both, both east side and west side of seventy-one. Um, specific to the city, the sidewalk would be a crossing on the south side of summit, that's shown in all purple or pink, whatever whatever eye you got, I guess, that you're looking at there. And um, yeah, the project in itself, or when I came last time, I think we talked about like pavement fix and uh, we talked, there's gonna be like a mill and overlay, we hadn't quite decided yet, so actually, we're gonna do a little bit bigger fix on seventy-one and seventy-two, which is a really good thing, so we'll we'll be doing a mill, and then we're gonna do a reclaim and pave.
Oh.
So.
Cool.
What's that?
Wow, that's good.
Yeah, so that, that is good, um. Questions that I'll be fielding as the project, you know, goes further through design is, you know, how are we gonna stage it? Uh, what kind of detours are there gonna be? Um we're gonna try to break this up into phases, so at least local detours or local impacts are, are minimized, but um yeah, there, there will be, you know, detours with the project, and, and when I mean the project, I say from Tent Strike all the way through Black Duck, the first mile of seventy-two, that's the, that's the red line that we looked at, you know, that's the project.
Um.
Um.
So this is right up like Timberline there in front, no?
Yeah, this is, so Timberline would be.
Summit Main. Okay.
Yep. Yep.
The project goes from Tent Strike to seventy-two, oh.
One, and, and one mile north of this intersection, see here, first mile of seventy-two. Well, I'll let you, I mean, you can chew on this photo and of course, ask questions as we go on, but I think you have good things coming, you know, we're gonna have lights replaced, we're gonna have sidewalk that connects from Summit side or from the gas station side over to the east side, which is the park. Uh, so I think all in all, good things, well, you'll see in that black gray, that blackish gray area that's shaded. Uh, we're gonna do some form of erosion control stabilization for the ATV crossings. Uh.
Oh.
So I've talked with the gas station owner there a little bit, and I wouldn't be too hung up on that's the spot where it's gonna land, but just know that we are looking at the erosion that's happening from the four-wheelers driving across the road.
Right.
So.
Is there any further down where the sleds go?
This, this was the only one we identified, at least that we'd be working on in this project. Um trying to think, I mean, schedule-wise, we're on track, uh, very early on, I think I like, always like to talk about like intervals within the project, there's this layout, which is where we're at now, I would, I would call that about like fifteen percent complete, and then we'll work towards thirty percent, sixty percent, and then ultimate, you know, ninety percent final, so we're at like that fifteen percent stage. Still pretty early on, but nice to touch base with you guys, uh. One thing, one thing that you'll see on the picture, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but you'll see your, your guys' utilities are, are also shown, uh, water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And as we do the design, um, you know, I don't foresee like a, a lot of impacts, but there's, there's a manhole in there and some water valves in there that could have to be like raised, and uh usually, we rely on the city to provide that data, and small cities usually will go to the city engineer to produce a, a plan sheet that gets put in our plan. Um that's, that's very common.
So, so the light blue color is water?
Yeah, I thought you picked out the water, this is, it looks like you had your water main here that runs across.
Water, and then what color is the sewer?
Uh, you got green there, which is, I, I realize it's hard to see, cuz the right-of-way lines are also green, but you got your green line that runs also here with the arrows.
Yep.
Um, you can see there's a man, there's a manhole right here, and then a couple water valve, gate valve stops or shut offs over here.
So the water and sewer were born underneath seventy-one back in seventeen?
Yeah, and we have the plans up from you guys for that, um.
So on your summary and to, intend to participate, your utility relocates are at this point, they're uh, not unknown and what the city would be in charge of for gate valve, curb stops, manholes, et cetera. At this point, I know it's unknown, but what do you foresee the city's gonna be responsible for?
Based on, well, first, we could take just a step further back, okay. So we, we got this intersection, which is nice, but I've worked with Mike a little bit on other crossings throughout the city.
Oh.
Um, I don't know if you ever had a chance to dig up plans on those or not.
But I couldn't find nothing, I know a cross is there, but I couldn't find anything on it.
Okay, so it, yeah, that's something that if you've come across, to let us know, um I have the permits to all of the, all of those, other than the furthest north, there's a force main crossing, I have nothing on that.
Uh, but all of that is so deep, I mean, you guys are never gonna touch it.
Correct, um. Yes.
I sure hope not anyways.
But we never, if you don't have the data, I don't know, how do you? So I.
You would always do everything around here, close your eyes and guess.
What might be helpful is if, if you at least kind of pencil in like, this is where you think it crosses and they can shoot you a picture to do that. So I'll get you something on that, but. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the project as, as a whole, so yeah, we're on track. Um if we need any of the uh plans to be drawn, which would be like details, we would come to you subsequently, I think you guys would. Probably turn to Woodset up on that. Um and this is, I'm not catching him off guard, this is, this is common, so. So that, that kind of leads us into that next piece of information, which was that intent to participate.
I see.
And so what I, what I created was that document, it's one page, it's attached to your guys' uh packet. And so what essentially I'm trying to do there, do there is, we have a local cost participation policy, it's about seventy seven pages long. It's, it, it encompasses all things related to, you know, costs for a local government entity. I take the seventy seven pages, I try to boil it down into one page, so you guys can actually.
Good job.
Read it and try to understand it. So.
Simplify.
I, I, I find that it's helpful to do that, so then we can have some actual dialogue related to the project and. If you want to, you can pull up that sheet, um.
Uh I can go through it, go to my stage.
Let me stay here for a second.
Go, go ahead, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
What material is this variable boulevard? Is that just a grass in between the asphalt and the sidewalk or what?
The, the shaded gray?
Well, the, the light green where it's a variable boulevard.
Yeah, so that's gonna be grass space.
Okay, and then the paved walkable, that is new pavement, south of what our road currently is or?
So right now Summit Avenue is like super wide. So it's not gonna be any new bituminous, it's just gonna be, um it's gonna be at a grade that's ADA approved compliant. So it's not gonna be like as steep, it'll be probably just a flatter bituminous out there. Yeah, any other question, maybe that's a good thing, like anything else on this sheet you might have a question about?
Not yet.
That block path that's gonna be tarred? The pink one?
The pink stuff here, yes, that'll actually be concrete.
Concrete?
Yeah. Nope, that's with our project, uh we're, we're, we're paying for that, that's also on that sheet, um. You guys will have to maintain it, so.
Yep, that was on here.
Yeah, that's also on the next sheet.
They build it, we take care of it.
That's fine. And that will be used for ATVs or people walking.
Not ATV.
Put ATVs on a crosswalk.
Okay.
Not ATV. That maybe has classified as a crosswalk. But bikes and pedestrians, that's it, I think.
Pedestrians, I, I actually wouldn't even probably say bikes, put bikes ride it, I mean, they're gonna go to the trail, right, so. It's not, it's not a trail, a trail is more for the bike, a walkable uh ADA facility is the sidewalk.
Okay.
But. It gets pretty well used both, both ways, so we're not gonna be out there policing it, you know.
It'd be nice though to have it designated because there's a lot of people, um pedestrians that use the north side of the intersection.
Yep.
To cross and having it really laid out on the south side, besides just it painted. Will, will help, I think.
Yeah, when we talked like two years ago, me and you, the first conversation was that was kind of a, a concern of, of the community, so. We're happy we can address that with this project.
More questions?
Cool. Yeah, so and then the next sheet is just kind of highlighting that breakdown of the seventy seven pages boiled down into one. And I slap a big drafts watermark on it because I expect, you know, as the project goes on, if anything else needs to be added to it, then we'll add it. If you guys have more that you'd like to talk about, um or have questions on, certainly. But essentially, I, I tried to break it down into just a few sub or bullet points, lighting, we've already kind of talked about that fifty fifty cost split there. Uh sidewalk, well, we just mentioned that now, so it's broken down by who owns it, uh the installation costs, ma- maintenance costs. Uh maintenance is, is, is you guys. Utility relocates, yeah, you, you guys asked about that, we, we are not gonna know that until we get into design.
Uh I mean, with, as far as the utility relocate goes, there's no way. That we're gonna move the water and sewer, they're too deep, I can't imagine you doing that, we might have to raise or lower a valve can or a manhole slightly, but. That's nothing.
Right.
Do as utility movement, don't think we're moving the water and sewer.
It's not reboarding those dang things.
They wouldn't go that deep.
We're not in the business to try to make a price on you guys, so I mean, the design should be appropriate design. There's, there's, you know, other, other communities where we've had like insulating, you know, if we were doing a storm sewer crossing, but we're not doing storm sewer here. So I, I expect very minimal impacts, but. We won't know until thirty percent plants usually, so.
That crosswalk stripe. That's across seventy one itself.
That'd be the painting, you have the paint marks for that.
And we're gonna be responsible for doing that going forward?
We do it the first, we do it on the first go and then from there on, the, the maintenance is your guys' responsibility.
We've never painted them.
Always come to town and do it.
I can talk with our.
Counties, the police painted theirs.
They've painted.
We've never painted ours.
Yeah, we've never had to paint seventy one before, ever.
I think the only ones that ever get painted are the counties and the states. Cause we don't paint our own.
Right, we don't paint these out here. We don't have crosswalks.
I think like other towns, the city of Amiji, you know, all the crosswalks at the four-way intersections or anything, they have to paint them, we don't usually paint those on, on. On our roads, cause they're within the city limits, so.
Okay.
I, I'm, I will check on that, but.
Yeah, it's in the past, I mean, I've been here, this is my sixth year now and it's been the state every year is going down it.
Do you have other crosswalks?
Yeah.
We don't.
No, we don't.
We do not, the county has crosswalks in town, we don't paint any of them.
So any crosswalk that you have currently in the city limits of Black Duck are all county crosswalks?
Correct.
So I'm.
On county roads.
I'm telling you.
Or state, or state on state roads.
Where's the state one on state roads?
Right here.
Seventy one, seventy one and seventy two.
Yep. And that's it.
Uh and seventy one across from the ball fields, from Liberty to cross to get, to do the walking trail.
Oh, the trail.
To do the walking trail from the ball fields to Liberty expansion.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing that out, I'll.
Yep.
Touch base with her and see who's doing them now and.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're not set up, it's, like you said, it's always been you guys and the county, I see you guys very broadly. Honestly, it's not you all there doing that.
I get it, oh, I painted them.
Yeah, between, yeah, well, state, county, it's one of those things for. Yeah, like you said, we've, we've never done.
Oh, yeah, and it's worth the question, but yeah. Appreciate that.
We appreciate you bringing it early, so the dialogue is done and not dropped.
Yeah, and this, that's like I said, this is what the purpose of this document is, is to have this kick, kick back and forth.
This is good.
Any item that's included in our plan set that you guys have the cost share on, you guys uh will, would also have to pay admin. Administrative charge on, that's eight percent.
Yeah, I was wondering what the eight was.
Yep. For a city-owned utility. We wouldn't provide inspection service or construction staking to that, cause we don't own it, it would, and. Quite frankly, we don't wanna be responsible for that, something that we, that's not ours, it's privately owned. So if that were to happen, we would reduce the fee to that, just those specific items to three percent and then you guys would have. More likely with stuff to your inspection on those. Once again, we'll know more at thirty percent. I mean. I think of bigger communities where it's, once again, we're insulating, removing a main, we're changing some. You know, some depth to the water main, you know, that's where it gets real big, the, I'm not expecting big impacts here, but there could be. Uh inspection services needed, once again, we'll know more at thirty percent. And Craig, go ahead and jump in here if I'm saying things that are, are out of the norm, but.
I'm taking notes.
This is all normal, this is all pretty normal.
Tell him, tell him he can watch it while he's on vacation, since he called me, me, my vacation.
But we've had even like, I'm, I'm thinking like sometimes even uh signs, like if there's green street label signs that have to come down. Well, you guys could take those down, you don't have to have us put them in the plan, you could take them down yourself or. We'll just, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a little bit further on where we actually have those items lined out and then you guys can chew on those. See, see what you think about them, but.
Mike, Mike likes chewing on stuff.
He's kind of a guy, that's easy, easy word.
We do it the old way, hook on to it, hang it up.
Um so maybe just things that I could use some help with from you guys is. This back and forth, it'd be nice, like I always send it to Christina, but if one of the council members don't have to decide tonight, also. Could be included to just. Review this as it goes back and forth, as we kick things back and forth, that would be helpful for me. Trying to think what else. Once we complete the thirty percent, I'll reach back out again and uh we'll talk about. If we need any sheets from you guys inserted into our plan and at that point, then we can include your city engineer.
And then a.
Yeah.
A realistic start date is like.
This is twenty eight construction.
Twenty eight?
Yep. Yep, the, the lead date is currently scheduled for August twenty fifth of twenty twenty seven, so it's really early in the fiscal year, but. Even if that were to move, you know, let's say we're coming up or we're late and it goes from August to September, October, November, that. That's not gonna jeopardize the twenty twenty eight construction. We're, we're feeling pretty good about twenty twenty eight construction on this one. Yeah, I, things you might see between now and the next time I come. We're gonna do some drilling, we'll have a contaminated consultant do contaminated soil drilling throughout the project. You, you may see him as you're driving towards Amiji, they'll only be able to day or two, but I don't know what day yet. I think that's, that's it. If, if. The lead date held and we did the letting in August, this might be a good note for you, Christina, just. Whenever the lead date happens to be usually like six to eight weeks following the lead date is the day in which we would. Uh we'd need that money exchanged for whatever portion of the dollars the, the work end up being.
Okay.
I can probably, if that's unsettling for you guys, I could probably see if we could push it out a little bit further.
Got in my notes, so I'd be for in twenty eight, but if we had numbers in twenties, before twenty seven. I can, I might be able to put that in the um street budget for. Or twenty seven, but you're supposed to use it when you get it, so.
Okay.
If the project is gonna go in twenty eight, it'd be better if the.
The money dollar happens after January.
Money follows the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just, it's better on paper that way, unless of course the project gets put off for some unknown. Then I just push it off to the side until it starts.
Okay. I'll mark, I'll mark that down to just kind of talk with our agreement writers, maybe we can do a little bit something later.
Ideally, um we start budget planning in August of each year for this following year. So knowing what our cost share will be by August to twenty seven. For a project in twenty eight, then, then we'll be able to work it in.
You'll never know the exact amount until letting, but you'll have that estimate where it's really defined, right? Cause once letting happens, then you actually plug in the unit prices, which you'll, you'll get your, to the penny, but.
Perfect.
We can usually get you in that ballpark, around sixty percent plans, so.
Sounds good.
That's all I have, really, the, I did ask the traffic engineer about the lighting. Uh per, per pole or per fixture, we talked about fourteen thousand, she still said that that's running where costs are.
That's combined, right?
Those each pole is fourteen.
That's why I wrote it down.
Also, you guys, you said.
All that, when we wanna reuse our stuff, well, they're dated.
But that includes like the removal of the old ones and of the, you know, electrical conduit around.
Well, it's everything, it's installed.
Inclusive.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's labor and materials.
Right.
Got it.
So.
Okay. Yeah.
Button pain happy, fifty fifty.
Oh, I know, well, we, we've spent eight to eleven grand just to erect new streetlights because people just. Follow them over with the cars in the winter time, yeah.
So that, that's the end of my, because you know, my presentation or a reason why I'm here, but yeah, I would appreciate being able to come back and. Keep you guys informed.
Just for my curiosity, what happens if you guys do your soil boring and find something that's?
The contaminated side of stuff, so then we have to put up a huge, well, I shouldn't say huge, but there's more language within the proposal. To protect our own selves, so then it's, how, you know, how do we handle it, how do we store it? It, it could incur more expense to us to make sure that we have the uh soil, more soil brought in rather than reused. Throughout the balance of the project. When we go through a project, if we're ever buying new right away. And we find contaminant, contaminated on it, then there's also that avenue of it too, where we have to, we have to protect our own, you know, selves, so we just. Do more research on it or uh ultimately make sure we dispose of it properly, you know, kind of the keeper of the. Of the, of the M P C A or, or guidance, I guess, for that contamination. Yeah, good question, though. But yeah, maybe Christina just follow with me, what council member could help me out as we go through the next couple, couple years kicking this back and forth.
Refreshing memories.
Okay, what, what else, anything or I'm not?
I have two good things happening, reminders, and I have a item to keep in mind in addition to that.
Okay.
First one is, I believe from the history center newsletter, one time I saw that Herb Lean started the noon whistle in uh. Nineteen fifty two or nineteen fifty three, so for the seventy years, it's been Monday through Saturday, not on Sunday. As of this month, it's seven days a week, including Sundays. We should just be aware of it, I don't know why that is, but.
Why it went off on Sunday?
Uh every Sunday, yeah. Since the power failure, so it didn't sound for eleven days.
It didn't because the, they had issues with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
And yeah, and then it went off.
And then we had to have it fixed, so.
Yeah, they shut it off on Wednesday, the second for the first Wednesday, but I'd just say be aware of that, I don't know if we wanna. Force it continue.
Uh you're gonna have to get your fire chief involved if you guys wanna.
Where is it on Facebook?
It's not going off, but yeah, it's not going off randomly, right?
No, no, it's, it's. New on Sunday.
Goes off every day.
Yeah, but not on Sunday, it never used to go off.
Seventy years it has not gone off on Sunday, it's always.
I just know that all signs of the.
Every hour on the hour.
It's, it's at noon, it's just, I wanna make sure that local clergy don't feel that we're violating the Sabbath.
Oh, the coffee guy.
So the, the good things happening are, we have the wood carvers on Saturday, she's good for business. I think if Timberline had coin-operated restroom facilities, they'd make a lot of money because there's a lot of people that go in there.
There's going to be extra fifties.
Uh and then the other thing that is scheduled with that is remember we all have our local talent show at the school auditorium. Um every year, the Shaughnessy or Judy and Shaughnessy Memorial Talent Show, which is uh great, uh. Uh spearheaded by Mary Larson. Yes, and she reminded me when I saw her on the street that there's an important schedule change, this year it's not on Saturday. The same day as the wood carpets, which has been previously, it's the day before, it's Friday at seven P M. Not Saturday like it's been following the wood carpet every, so. Not Saturday like it's been following the wood carpet every, so I would, I might have made a mistake, but it's also in the paper with the correct date, but I think. I believe you're right, yeah, people should uh be aware, you know, if they're used to going after the wood. But those are my contributions to your schedule.
Thank you, Ron. Anything else? Mike, I had a hunch. Just something quick that uh I wanna touch on, I had Brian from the fire department. Come to me and talk a little bit, him and I about possible extension of a water main. Up to the new co-op building, at least to get a hydrant here. So that's something I'm gonna be looking into and.
It's a great idea.
If we do that, it needs to be all at their cost, the co-op's cost, it will essentially be a private line.
Yeah, cause it'll connect from Main Street all.
It'll, yeah, it'll go up, it'll be a private line essentially, um, will exercise the hydrant twice yearly like we do with all the others and stuff, but. It will, in my opinion, it'll pay for itself with their insurance savings, you know, having. A a decent flow of water up there versus just a well that they have.
I I assume uh, they they talked about, about they're over Rachel.
I I don't know, I don't know that they have yet, Stretch, it just kind of come to me. With the possibility of getting a hydrant at least kind of across main over to there, he didn't really realize that we didn't have one. Until by Cease is here, um, and in talking to him, I kind of told him that if, I mean, if you're gonna cross the road, you might as well just go all the way with it. You're in gravel over there, probably bored the whole way up there, and it would have to be under where the the creek crosses underneath there anyways. But with the size of the building they're putting up and obviously, I mean, if in the co-op and stuff, I would assume that they'd be happy to. Get decent fire protection rolls by to them up there.
Has has Stretch considered doing, I mean, obviously, I think his focus is fire, right? And emergency management, has he considered putting in one of those hydrants into the creek there? Instead, like they have on like you can't.
Can't do it right.
Cause the water level is.
You can't get some of the flowage there.
Okay.
Because of the way it's it's swampy marsh. From time to time.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah, no, we we discussed that too.
Okay.
That just won't work there.
I'm sure they wouldn't get pressure enough.
No, they can't pull enough out of it. It's something for you guys to be aware of that, we're gonna try to work on that and see, like I said, that'll be. At their cost, not ours, so. What would the diameter be?
Kind of what they want up there, I believe in Maine, I think we've got, hold on here, let me pull it up and see, I think we've got. Six inch or maybe eight inch down on main right there, give me just a second.
Yeah, we've got eight inch down there, so I mean, they could run eight inch all the way up there, or they go to six, they go to four, kind of whatever they want.
We get a line on Cedar all the way down.
They could run a line all the way up there. So right now they're well-only, so.
Yeah, they're private, purple services, a couple of them are actually, everything on this side from Cedar down is private, right? Carrigan's, campus. Campus have water, they don't have sewer.
I believe Carrigan's has water too, but they don't have sewer.
They don't have sewer, that's it, they have one, but not the other.
And I wouldn't be surprised, I mean, if if an eight inch gets ran up there, I wouldn't be surprised to see them possibly tap in. For their building, you know, for their usable, drinkable water too, maybe.
Sure.
Which obviously would be a nice thing for us. All in favor? I I know. Stand adjourned.